Catherine's unable to make it tonight and we have Janice on the phone. So we've got three of us present, so let's go ahead and call our school board meeting to order. If we're live, okay. We are called to order. Let's rise in the pledge of allegiance. I think over in the far corner here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well, big crowds for a summer night. Good to see the folks here. Uh, we have nothing under early items. Number three tonight. So we'll kind of breeze through that. Number four. Sorry, Janice? Okay, uh, citizen input, number four. We have one blue card in front of me. Uh, we have Mr. Gordon Clay is with us tonight. Um, Gordon, I'm gonna maybe have you come to this microphone right here and turn that on if you would. Just so the folks home can hear. And, uh, go ahead, sir. Does that work, Janice? Can you hear Gordon?
I cannot hear him yet.
Hello?
There we go.
Now I, now I can hear him.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. I have several important issues to discuss today. The request to approve the proclamation declaring September Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. It is estimated by the CDC that over 1.2 million Americans attempted suicide in 2020. A hun- 1,054,000 became temporary survivors. Of those, it is estimated that 10% or 154,000 of them will die by suicide in their lifetime. The school board's support of the proclamation to proclaim September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month will help remind county citizens of the importance to know the signs. And when they see a friend or family member exhibiting one of those signs, to ask, are you okay? And it's okay to say you're not okay. That conversation could change your life. I became affiliated in July of 2016 with the International Are You Okay Campaign originating in Australia. I am providing the superintendent, and I'll give this to you, with a packet of toolkits ranging from programs with coaches in school and in homes, toolkits of all ages, staff toolkit and one directed inclusively at LGBT students, which according to the 2020 student survey for Curry County, a quarter of your students self identify as non-binary. Many of the established 600 students have not come out primarily because of the fear regarding their safety. The coaches kit is an example of a toolkit and the rest of the ones in this packet are cover sheets. And just let me know if you want any of them. I will, uh, get copies of them for you. Also in the packet, uh, i- is a copy of the Are You Okay Youth Video Contest, which is open to any student enrolled in one of the 197 school districts in Oregon. The videographer asks, uh, fellow students how they would ask, are you okay in their way? It could be another language or a certain way you talk within your group. You put them on YouTube or TikTok by September 30th. Turn in a form with the necessary signatures and the URL and the internet will pick the best and most original ones. Each winner will collect a hundred dollars and there'll be six winners. October is Bully Prevention Month. Every school day, more than 160,000 school, uh, children stay home nationally, stay home from school to avoid being bullied. Not only are the effects of bullying on a child felt immediately, but they can also be lifelong or even tragic. During Bully Prevention Month, students, schools and communities across the nation will unite to raise awareness for this important bully prevention time. 988 and the crisis text line, 741741. I have plenty of crisis wallet cards for the youth warning with the warning signs on the back. I would encourage the use of the crisis text line while the 988 text line gets, uh, running well in rural Oregon. I encourage you to learn more about the concerns happening with their text line system, with the, uh, 988 text line system. Check out zeroattempts.org/988.html to start. And, uh, okay, there's some real concerns out there.
Okay, with, with the 988 system? Oh, really?
Yeah, specifically the text.
Thank you.
Gordon, please use the microphone.
Uh, you, being instant, into institutionalized, you know, kept over and then assigned against their will. And, uh, there's an inordinate amount and most of it's coming from rural communities. And, and I've got things from NPR and The Hill and a number of, uh, valid, uh, reports on the website and I, anything I find, not anything, because that's not my top priority, but things that I find, uh, are, uh, I put on. And I'm really supportive of nine, uh, 741741. They've done an excellent job. Uh, they, they use AI and AI can determine things with, um, emoticons and, and they've found that there are 24 emoticons that are more of a crisis for a child or a texture than the word suicide. So, uh, and that's something that a regular counselor can't do. They can't read the impact of the emoticons. And kids use emoticons all the time. So anyway, thank you and I hope you got, got that, Janice.
Thanks, Gordon.
Most of it. Thank you, Clay. I mean Gordon.
Yeah, good to see you too, sir. And also I realize I've neglected to read the statement about our policy here, so I, I apologize, but I, I guess you're probably familiar with it, so. I'll do, it's been a long summer, I guess, yeah. Okay, that's the only one I think we have. No online submissions, um, that heard from Nancy. Some microphone problems. Uh, all right, moving along, the consent agenda. Got a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Janice. Thank you. Any comments or discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Well, I have a, I think we need to modify the minutes, the draft minutes of the organizational meeting.
Oh, really?
It just says the very last statement says we, the organizational meeting was adjourned at 7:20. And then we moved on to our regular July meeting. And I think that time needs to be changed to, I don't know, according to, we didn't, what wasn't a very long organizational meeting, but it didn't get over at 7:20.
Didn't take that long.
Yeah, I can go ahead and I'm sure it's just a typo with the time because it was a very short meeting, like 10 minutes.
Yeah, it was. I, I remember that. That was all I saw.
Yep, and I can double check that with the video of the meeting, um, to get the exact time. So you could, um, you could move to approve with that change or I can just bring it back next month again.
I'd suggest we go ahead and move to approve with that, um, time correction made after the.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a caveat that Nancy's gonna double check and correct the timing on the ending of that organizational portion. Thanks, Janice. Anything else that came up?
Nope, that was the only thing I saw.
All right, let's go for a vote then, Janice.
Aye.
Jay. Okay, then an aye here for me. Right, uh, district reports information, Mr. Marshall's portion, so. Turn my mic off.
All right, uh, thank you. Just a couple of things here. First off, wanted to, uh, I guess in this case, remind that, uh, last year, over the second half of the year, we had a group of, uh, teachers involved in revising and updating the teacher evaluation system. Uh, and we ended up with, um, it's a, it's a well-known model, um, by Charlotte Danielson. Uh, it's a framework that it has established rubrics and targets and that sort of thing. So that will be letting the board know that that will be implemented starting in this fall. So there'll be training involved in that for both the teachers understanding the system, uh, as well as the administrators in terms of conducting the evaluations. It's not substantially different than the system that we previously had. It's just, it's simply organized a little bit differently. Uh, the target levels are a little bit, I would say, clearer and more well-developed. Um, so if, if the board desires, I'd be happy to come back and present more detailed information on that framework. Um, but I did, since it was a significant change, um, in process, wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that change. Are there any questions about that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I, could I get a copy of that evaluation system?
Uh, yes, I was just trying to think, cause I mean, there's a whole book on it and the framework with is the, um, the actual evaluation standards with the rubrics. Um, that's downloadable online and I'd be happy to, I'll just send a copy of, uh, the framework itself to the whole board.
Okay.
So happy to.
Good.
Uh, and then we have, um, uh, John Crown Apple with, uh, your homework book assignment. He will be, uh, here next Monday. Um, so just a quick straw poll. Uh, I know that not everybody could make it, but just kind of checking who's, uh, planning and able to attend who's here now, so.
I cannot.
You can.
I am, no, I just saw the doctor today and I'm still, I'm off my feet for another four weeks.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I can be there. Now Catherine said she could and I don't know about Janelle yet. So yeah, we're getting a little thin, man.
Yeah, okay. Well, what, what I will do is for the moment, we'll, we'll hold that. Um, but I'll also check with him on some potential other availability because I, I think it would be worthwhile, obviously, to have everyone there. Um, and, you know, getting the most value out of that in-person, uh, visit and support and training, so. Um, so I will check on his availability. Um, we'll, we'll hold the next Monday, but, um, yeah, I'm kind of leaning if, if, you know, we're right at that tipping point anyway where, um, you know, I, I just think it would be more beneficial to have everyone there or at least as many folks as possible.
Three is, yeah, a little questionable in my mind too.
And then if it's just two, it's like, yeah, I'm probably a whole lot less benefit, so, okay. Uh, so we'll follow up on that. Uh, he's very responsive, so I should have some idea about potential dates. I think it's, it's not essential that it happens next week. Uh, I think it's just more important that it's early on in the process, so this fall, we'd really want to have him here, so. Um, and just, you know, see when that aligns with his travel schedule with other districts. And then lastly, uh, just as an informational piece, so, uh, as you recall, you know, you, obviously the board's responsibility is the policy. Often a lot of policies have administrative rules connected with them. And so the update process for that is I bring the update to you, uh, share it. You have opportunity to ask questions and then once that's been shared, then that gets pushed over, um, to Nancy who then updates the AR that goes along with the policy. And so a minor update to the AR connected with, uh, facility use. And it really, the only change in that is, uh, the change from, I think it was, or is currently $28 an hour for custodial time, uh, for cleanup time if needed, and that bumps up to $40 an hour. And, uh, visiting with DeeDee, she said it's, it's been probably around a decade since that number had been updated. Uh, and it's trying to strike the balance. In no way is this intended to be a quote-unquote money maker. Um, but we obviously can't afford to be losing significant amounts of money, uh, because that money will have to come from other places in the budget then. And so, um, that's the, the adjustment that we'll make. All the rest of the practice and process is still the same. Uh, and, and just for clarification with the custodial hours, it's their bill on the amount of hours that it took. So if there is a minimal cleanup, uh, and/or if there's an opportunity to just have it be on, you know, at the start of the week, like if there's a Sunday group that didn't really make any mess or need any cleanup, there would not necessarily even be a billing for it. Um, larger events are gonna have more time, so it's literally based on the time card, um, for, uh, the amount of time that it takes for that, so. Questions about that?
No, I mean, probably not. It makes sense to, you know, try, try to remain at a break even point with those extra services.
We're, we're still not quite there, um, and it, the wages will vary. So these are our own custodians, so more often than not, um, we're talking, uh, time and a half because of overtime. Cause they're full-time in the buildings, uh, so that does bump up the cost there. And so this just gets us a little closer. Um, we do have fairly high levels of facility use, so, you know, it, it just, it will add up if we don't do a little.
Those are just things that are outside of the district. I mean, that doesn't mean sports games necessarily or.
No, no, that, that's, we, we already planned for that and scheduled for that. This is other organizations, it's not the district coming in and using the facilities. Um, and it's in the re- the rest of the AR is intact in terms of, um, you know, depending on the group, there may be a fee, just a general fee, but all the groups, if, if we have to do some cleaning afterwards, that amount is billed to them. And it's a well-established practice and, and folks know to expect it. Uh, it's just that we, we need to bump up the cost a little bit so that we're not losing so much.
Makes sense, unfortunately, but yeah, I hear.
Any other questions? And then reminders for, uh, Friday, the 26th, the board's invited for the new staff lunch. And that's at noon. Uh, that'll be at the high school cafeteria. Uh, so all board members are invited to that. And then on, uh, Tuesday morning invited to the welcome back breakfast.
Yeah, I also had a question about how that's gonna look this year, because I think last time we talked, were you not quite sure how the, it was gonna shake out, I think.
Well, what, where we are is, um, kind of not, not feeling comfortable jam packing the high school, uh, with community members and, you know, not knowing about the weather, so I think the consensus was, um, we'll do this, it'll be all staff and board. It'll be the breakfast and then we're in the process of scheduling, um, community-wide kind of welcome back events that can be in the stadium and that sort of thing. So whether we connect them to the planned open houses and that sort of thing of just, you know, giving them the opportunity to like, we're excited and get the school year started. So that's how, we'll, we'll kind of address that. It also helps a lot with the logistics, so.
Okay.
Breakfast will start to be served at 7:30, uh, so you can show up anytime.
That's.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday after next. Yeah, lunch next Friday, the 26th, and then breakfast on the Tuesday. Hope you all can make it.
Yeah, those are fun. Okay, great, um. The next little thing is the, just the, you know, the district reports we continue to get. Um, did we need to do anything particular with this English Language Learners Report?
It's just required to be, um, shared to the board by September 1st each year.
Yep, I know it's an annual report that we get and kind of absorb. I didn't know if there's any particular things to point out or to act on.
Uh, I mean, nothing really specific, um, here, just for a little bit of context. I mean, we have a comparatively small English learner population in the district. Uh, it, it's around, uh, I want to say around 30 kids, um, out of the whole, um, district. And to be eligible, uh, the process, which is basically federal and state process is, uh, when folks enroll and in enrollment, there's a question of, you know, is your primary language at home, English? What language did you grow up speaking? And then if, uh, if students are, you know, either their first language is another language or the primary language at home is a different language other than English, then, uh, they're evaluated, basically their English proficiency is evaluated using a state test. And then if, if they're not proficient in English, then they're eligible to participate in the language learner program, where they receive explicit instruction in English language. Uh, and so that's in during as part of the school day. And then depending on the level, like for example, at the elementary level, typically that's a pull-out prob- program where those kids will go, uh, you know, to a classroom and receive that instruction. Uh, secondary level, that's most often like a class period where they will receive that.
Okay, yeah, a lot of this, I just go through it, look kind of statewide numbers. I mean, that's.
Yes.
Kind of the point of this report, right?
Yes. Yeah, in the, I want to say, no, inter, we have our district report of, here's more details on our population and how they have progressed with their language.
Yeah, I feel like I've seen that before, but this didn't seem to be.
Yeah, we have to do an end. This is the broad one and then, uh, in the middle of the year, we do the more detailed one for our specific context.
Yeah, that'd be, be a little more impactful probably, at least what I remember about it. Okay, questions on any of that stuff, anybody? Or the finance report? Chugging along, thank you. Uh, action items, got a couple things here. We have a couple proclamations, you know, I think we've talked about as a board trying to get ahead of some of these rather than, you know, have the, the September, October ones, you know, during the month of, but kind of get, get them out ahead and be able to publicize them a little bit. So we have in front of us, and thanks to Gordon Clay as well, um, Suicide Awareness Proclamation and a Bullying Month Proclamation, October. So I'd like to, you know, maybe we should read it out loud. I think we kind of tend to do that before. So as a pro- uh, pro- or, uh, kind of, as far as September goes, I should say, as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, the proposed proclamation reads, whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion or background, and suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of a pandemic. And whereas 45,979 people lost their lives due to suicide in 2020, including 833 Oregonians, suicide is the ninth leading cause of death for Oregonians, which ranks Oregon with the 13th highest suicide rate in the nation. And whereas suicide was the second leading cause of death for 15 to 44-year-old Oregonians in 2020. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, our entire rural community. And whereas research shows that 95% of adults would do, would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide, if they only knew what to say or do. Therefore, the, the Brookings Harbor School District hereby proclaim September 2020 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. It be of further resolve that the Brookings Harbor School District encourages all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague or a family member, are you okay? And be prepared to listen. That conversation could change a life. So do we have a motion to approve that proclamation?
Do you want to read them both and then one motion?
We have it in the agendas too, so.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the suicide, uh, proclamation.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Anything, just comment on or add to the proclamation?
Yeah, I do. So, um, when we do these, for me, it's, it's, uh, it's vital to be as accurate as possible. Um, the, the fifth whereas looks, um, where research, research shows 95%, I would like to see, the citation or, uh, what that, where's that research validated from? I mean, I would hope that 95% of adults would do something if they knew about it.
Hundred percent.
Exactly, you know, I think, um, I think we could safely say, um, you know, that
Majority.
The majority of, you know, individuals, yeah, most adults who, you know, something, right? Um, but I think we limit it down. I just, I get a little worried when we cite statistics that we don't have reference to.
Yeah. Valid point. I tend to agree.
I also have a suggestion. Uh, now therefore the Brookings Harbor School District hereby proclaim September 2022 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Is it like, that's it? It's not next September? It's not the September after that? It's just a September?
Well, we, we tend to redo this every year.
Yeah.
And, and at the very least, talk about it and, and kind of reiterate it and post it on our website and just as a method of bringing it up.
But I think, Janice, the, the, the idea is, is as the school year starts, um, trying to make awareness for the preliminary signs and symptoms and then following the second month with, uh, some of the behaviors that can lead to, um, you know, you.
Right.
In, in, in depressive states, so, um, the, the other piece, sorry, I mean, I'm stickler on this kind of stuff, but the, the first and second, or the second and third whereas, where, um, you know, I, I wish we had what, what source was used to identify the statistics identified in those first two, um, wherashes and, um, I think.
Yeah, according to X, if it's, you know, something.
Right. I mean, I've done a lot of research in this as well and, um, I think nationwide it's the, the second largest cause behind generally accidents. So.
Yeah, I, I suppose the, the second leading cause of death, I heard things similar to that, but I guess I can't swear that that's.
Right.
In that age range and the year and all that kind of.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I just, uh, there's a couple of things I, I'd just like to clean up to shore up in the way of, you know, if people did want to.
Yeah, well, I mean, accurate's important for sure. Um, is that something that we could ask Gordon for citations and come back with, do we think, or what?
Um, I was also gonna say, in the past, the board has sometimes adopted the proclamation and just dropped some of the stats out of it, just some more streamlined about the, the motivation for it, but not the stats when it's, um, text proposed by a community group.
Right, I mean, I know we've done that last year and the year before.
Yeah, I think we've done that.
With similar things.
As I was, as I'm just kind of quickly reading through it, I'm just, I don't know if I want to take a whole lot of time to totally rewrite it right now.
I, I don't, I don't know that either.
Yeah, change, I mean, things like, you know, the 95% of the adults, yeah, change a couple of words there.
Sure.
Very easy, but moving some of these stats around might be.
How do we know that suicide was the second leading cause of death? There's no way you can change that, you know, massage those words.
Well, we, you can say suicide has been a leading cause of death for 15 to 44-year-olds in Oregon.
Okay, yeah.
We can, we, we don't have to be so specific, but still capture the, the essence of what it's saying.
Do you want to, for the second one, like, tens of thousands of people? Including almost a thousand Oregonians? Just kind of generalize a little bit more since you don't have the situation.
I mean, I think we could say something along the lines of, uh, um, you know, whereas, uh, tens of thousands of people lose their lives to suicide, uh, annually, and in 2020, um, you know, if there was an increase, that would be.
Right. Yeah, there's no context whether that's up or down.
Right, and that's the kind of stuff that I, you know.
But then we'd still need the citation for it.
Right. Just, I mean, you want to say nearly a thousand Oregonians?
I like that.
And then what we can do, I mean, to, to really try and get ahold of it ahead of that is have that conversation with Gordon now and say, hey, you know, we really appreciate your work on this. You know, can we, the request of, you know, expanding on this and the citations and or some context would be greatly appreciated.
And I think he's worked on that every year.
Yeah.
Cause it, it used to be a, a page long and with multiple different.
Right.
Very pointed statistics, so. That's all my feedback.
Is that clear enough to kind of have something that we could adopt tonight or?
It's kind of a lot of friendly amendments, but I think, um, with the direction to just cleanse out the specific stats and make it more general, but in the same, um, with the same meaning, uh, for the overall proclamation, I could do that. And then, um, it'll still, of course, go to you to be signed, Alan, so you'll get another look at it.
Pass that. Okay, well, I'm happy with that, that's.
Me too.
Thanks for pointing that out, Jay. Okay, so, it's like we need a, maybe an amended motion to take into account our discussion here. Thanks for pointing that out, Jay. Okay, so, it's like we need a, maybe an amended motion to take into account our discussion here.
No, I'll move to, um, to adopt the proclamation as September is suicide awareness and prevention month, uh, with the, um, adjustments made, discussed here today.
Discuss, yeah.
I'll second that. I'll do that off. Anything else, Janice?
Nope.
Still there? Okay, let's vote on it then. Uh, Janice?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Aye, for me. Okay, the next one is an approval of the October is bully prevention month. Looks like less stats here, so hopefully that's, uh, easier to go through. Uh, proclamation, October is bully prevention month, whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation or harm intentionally directed at a person or a group of people that incur, that occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through technology. And whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence, annually affecting thousands of Oregon children and adolescents. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And whereas children who bully are at a greater risk of emerging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, the Brookings Harbor School District hereby proclaims the month of October twenty twenty-two as bully prevention month. Be it further resolved that the Brookings Harbor School District encourages all schools, students, parents, I can't read this here, recreational programs, religious institutions, and community businesses and organizations become engaged in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safe for all children, adolescents, and adults. Start with supporting a friend who is getting bullied to move from being a bystander to becoming an upstander, it's based there, when they witness someone being bullied.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, sorry.
Well, I, I stopped before you even spoke because I forgot you didn't ask for a motion yet.
I read it first, so. What, what do we, what do you got, Jay?
Uh, sorry, so, um, so there are a couple of things, right? There's, there's some strong statements, uh, that should have some, um, citation.
We need a motion first.
Now, let's go, yeah, let's go the other way. We can kind of modify here and
Sure.
move something.
So we're going to have to make two motions. Good thinking.
And, uh, and then I think the only piece that I'd like to see maybe adopted or looked at, evaluated, discussed, is in the be it further resolved, um, that the Brookings Harbor School District encourages all schools, parents, recreational programs, religious institutions, community to become engaged in a variety of awareness and prevention activities. But I think in there, we need to have a portion in there that says, and take action against bullying. You know, it's one thing to notice it, it's one thing to identify it, it's another thing to address it. Right, and that's how we root that stuff out. So
Right.
I'd like something in there that says that we
I like that.
Variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make a community safe. See, how'd you put that in there? Yeah. Put a little more strongly worded, perhaps, and take action language.
Leading to helpful action.
I mean, we could even say the prevention activity is not limited to addressing the behavior displayed in an effort to make our community safe for all children, adolescents, and adults, starting with the support of a friend who's getting bullied, you know?
That's not bad.
Mm-hmm, not limited to.
Is that what that, is that really what, isn't that really what an upstander is? Is that what they're saying there? Stop being a bystander and become an upstander, standing up for somebody, doing something about it?
Yes, but it's one thing to be an upstander that doesn't have authority and an authority figure who doesn't support the bullied, if that makes sense. You know, because, uh, a, a youth can stand up for another youth, but if ultimately, if somebody with authority, doesn't take the steps to actually look and intervene, then there's a chance that bullying will continue and that upstander's not around.
Right, okay.
But yes, more upstanders definitely decrease it, decreases bullying.
Okay. Did you sort of capture the Jay suggestions or Nancy? I don't know if I could repeat it well. Okay.
Limited to, so, prevention activity is not limited to addressing the behaviors, what was the?
Exhibited?
Exhibited.
Yeah, that sounded good.
And designed to make our
Pick up where that was, yeah. Okay. Well, how about a motion to adopt the October bully prevention month proclamation with the discuss, discussed changes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the bully prevention month proclamation with the adopted changes and discussed changes.
Thank you.
Second.
You'll second. You'll second. It's up to you, second. Jay got it. Thank you. Uh, okay, discussion, comments, anymore?
No, I just, I'm glad we're, this is, these are vital, um, and the bullying, um, is a real, um, particular one for me in particular, you know, I just, uh,
Yes, very important.
No tolerance. Um, we know that unless youth feel safe, they can't learn, and it only takes a few youth to not make, feel safe, so, or adults in some matters, right? I mean, nobody's so, thank you for putting these up.
Uh, all right, Janice?
Aye.
Uh, Jay?
Aye.
An aye for me. Okay, thanks, guys. Um, next up, an authorization for a community group to move forward with a fundraising plan for a new high school track and field proposal. So I think unfortunately, Jay and Janice, you missed the work session a couple of weeks ago. Darren Farmer came and kind of laid out his plan for helping, or basically to kind of lead up an effort in the community, his, his, and you can kind of read a lot of it here, but, and from the minutes before, enough you got into that, but to try to summarize, he's, he's got a group of kind of heavy-hitting community members that have thrown a lot of support behind the plan of redoing our stadium with turf and to resurface our track. And his basic proposal was, you know, we can, we think we can have enough in-kind donations and fundraising capabilities to come up with the million and a half or so dollars to do this project, as that's been estimated. And he would, he's generally asking for the board and the school district's, um, broad approval to, um, you know, let them go forth and, and raise that money, and then, and that we would be happy recipients of such a project.
For sure.
Yeah, so, um, I, I was reading the minutes and, and I had noticed that the, the discussion of, uh, potentially, um, co-opting some of the support into a bond, um, was not as received, as well received, or?
So the, that part of the conversation, uh, I think Alan brought that up of saying, you know, we'd like to consider this. Um, and I think the, the, the response was more, um, that that puts it out a lot farther. So there was a strong desire to saying, you know, we can get this done in pretty short order. Um, and that, you know, if you're looking at a May bond and then that whole process where, you know, their, their goal, that group stated goal would be to have it in place for the start of the subsequent school year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Wow, that'd be under construction.
Yeah, so, so that, that was, that was the primary, I wouldn't say objection, but like why they, it's like, we don't want to wait, is, was essentially the short version of that.
And, um, is there any commitment from the school district to supplement any of this?
Not a commitment. Uh, we talked about some different ideas and, uh, we'd have to dig more into it, so there is some potential. Um, my sense off the top is it would be, you know, obviously somewhat limited. A possibility is with ESER, which, you know, it's allowable under ESER. We just need to understand of, um, you know, exactly how much we might have available to consider for that. Um, one of the ideas I brought up is, you know, we've got these projects already allocated, but what, as I was talking about that, because like the covered area for this area is, you know, it's a significant cost. But when I got done the meeting, says, well, DeeDee says, well, you know, we're under contract for that. So that's, that's pretty much already spent, so we really can't change that. So what we need to do is go back, and so my recommendation on this is that would be the follow-up work of really digging into the cost, understanding that of, are there things that the district could do in support of that, like allocating, you know, some dollars or some other supports in that? Um, but that the general principle was, and, and what Mr. Farmer concluded is like, we want to do this, we'll do it. You know, if we can get help, great, but, um, you know, my, my recommendation is not have that moving forward be contingent on, well, if the district can kick in half a million dollars because we can't. We still don't have a specific amount. So that would be kind of part of the follow-up work of, I think there would be a desire to support that on as many levels as possible. And then another consideration, just to put out there, um, is that part of that follow-up work is also developing a plan for the replacement cycle. Because to fully budget for that, you're probably around seventy, eighty grand a year for a twelve-year replacement cycle. So that's probably not doable, but I think it would be important to do something and have a plan for that so that you don't get to the end of the cycle like we are now with our track and say, we have no money for it and we desperately need it replaced, and, you know, we're not going to be able to use it for much longer. So I think that should be part of the conversation and hopefully saying, we need to keep this in front of us so that during our budget cycle is going, are we able to put any money away for this? Or if you have some unexpected dollars of taking a little bit of that, um, and then just looking for other creative, uh, pieces there. So again, my, my view of it, that's the follow-up work, is like, are we in support of the idea where if they wrote us a check, we'd go ahead and put the stuff in? Great, and then what else could we do to help support moving that along is kind of step two.
And I would assume they're going to use the Boosters nonprofit probably to do this.
Yeah, I think DeeDee's actually, she's doing some research, uh, Scapoo School District had a similar situation, uh, community group raised a significant amount of money. Uh, so she's visiting with them on just those, how do you handle the logistics of?
I think just logistically it did come up in this meeting a couple of weeks ago, that as a place to receive any grant money, instance, you're going to need some sort of nonprofit vehicle, that likely could be the Booster Club.
Perfect, and, I mean, there's, there's no better win-win than when community takes ownership and pride in, in, in our facilities and
That was most of Darren's story was, you know, some of the folks that he interacts with, and there's a, you know, a, a high-ranking official at South Coast Number, for instance, that's behind this, and he sees a real need right now, um, you know. All, all the usual folks you could think of, I think Darren's garnered support and kind of got some, some momentum right now. So hate to dissuade that, I think it's a good thing to encourage. And I, I, my opinion is I'd be very happy to kind of accept that kind of donation on the behalf of the school district.
Absolutely.
Pull it together. So I, I'm in support of, you know, supporting it as a district, certainly, you know, in, in stance and in language and in, you know, a proclamation.
Say yes to the money.
Absolutely.
And what, so Jay, with the bond, what they did mention, or the conversation happened was, um, of course, their vision is bigger, looking at, you know, updating the, the actual, um, you know, the bleachers, the stadium, and that sort of thing. And so it's like, well, we want to keep it focused to an achievable level. So then it was that follow-up conversation as well, you know, you could look at those upgrades as part of a bond. And the benefit of that is if, if, if they're able to be successful, then that's a significant amount less that you would need to consider in a bond. So it's a win-win-win of like that, you know, decreases the potential amount that we'd consider to really accomplish quite.
Yeah, it takes out a million or two out of any sort of bond.
Yes.
Right. No, I'm a hundred percent behind it, um, the district capacity and in a personal capacity.
Me too.
Well, he's excited about it, and he's actually called me since the meeting too, and then, um, I could tell he's, he's fired up to get going here. So he is looking for, uh, for the district and the board to be open to this idea and basically acknowledge that we would be happy to take the gift.
Did he think he wouldn't?
Well, you know, based, if you look at the, and he's had a couple, according to him, he's had a couple runs at this in the past, and it hasn't worked out, and, and he would, he would say it was not well-received by the district in the past, this type of idea. So that's why he's kind of looking for a little
Okay.
Little official approval, if you will.
Sure. Well, I, I'm, I'm kind of mad that I wasn't able to attend. But I would say thank you to Darren and this group and Darren's energy to spearhead it, not give up. After other attempts and, and, um, it takes, it takes a lot of networking energy and, and to go through, you know, these things on a community-based level on this kind of scale, so.
Yeah, so where he's at, just, just if it wasn't clear, he's, he's got what seems to be a, a very high level of kind of verbal commitment for what seems to be mostly in-kind type of work.
Yeah.
Machine work and equipment work and some of those things. Um, sounds like he's got a lot of ideas of where to go for matching funding that might match some of that in-kind dollars and, you know, kind of back of the napkin math, he would say that he's, you know, getting, getting there. But now it's a matter of going out and finding the actual dollars on a lot of that stuff, so.
Yep. Absolutely.
Another fact that kind of stuck out to me from that meeting was just given lead times of things and, and supply chains and whatnot, he would, he's kind of targeting the end of this year, like late September, to actually get orders placed for materials and things. So that kind of backs him up as far as, um, you know, getting some funds committed here in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Talking about Darren and, and track and field things.
Yeah.
Enter now.
So the suggestion that, you know, Dave and I talked about this, um, about the best way to kind of show official board support of this, and how does this hit the board, but to have a proclamation, something along the, the suggestion I have in front of me here, which would be, the board moves to direct board chair and superintendent to write a letter of support for the community fundraising team seeking funds to install new, a new turf multipurpose field and replace the track at Brookings Harbor High School in the summer of twenty twenty-three. This letter should detail the benefits of the project for students and community and the district's commitment to the completion and upkeep of the new facilities. This letter would be ready for board approval and signing at the September twenty-three regular board meeting.
Still moved.
Yeah, and part of that logic is, and that also gives them something to go for grants with.
Sure.
And it's again, not committing at this point, the board or the district, any monetary dollar amount, although I think that's something we should continue to talk about, is what can the district do to show support and kind of be involved, and I think we ought to consider that pretty strongly to some level. But again, not knowing all the particulars of the budgets and the dollars available, I don't want to commit any hard dollars necessarily today.
Sure.
That would, that's the suggestion right now, yeah. And it's the, the, less proclamation, more of the board moving to, um, basically have David and me create a letter of support with these kind of broad things that I just read out. Well? Well, I, I guess, right, it would be, need a board action to.
Turn your microphone on. I can't hear you.
Did you know, suggesting we get that letter to Darren sooner than a month from now?
I agree.
We could probably put forth a motion that authorizes the development and delivery of the letter that we just discussed. Yeah.
Certainly share it, but yeah, we can get it, Darren, you know, next week or something.
Yeah, sure.
Same last time we were together, I felt like he was hoping that today's meeting would give him some.
Well, I'm also, I'm also hopeful that just the action at the meeting tonight and
Will help.
The passing of this direction to create a letter would be a good start.
Enough for him to go forward, but I think like with the grants and stuff, the actual letter.
Yeah. Well, we could have a, a motion to write, you know, such a letter to Darren as soon as possible. If the board wants to do that.
I'll make a motion to, to move forward with the proposed letter in support of this fundraising effort. And in, in addition to, um, sign and delivery of the letter to the interested parties.
Second.
Does that work, you think? Okay. Okay? Okay. Anything else you need to add or discuss? Okay, let's go around the room. Janice.
Aye.
Janelle. Jay.
Aye.
I hear two. Do it. Thank you. Okay, the next action item, adoption of the proposed update to the student success priority language. Back here.
I like what it says, but I do not like it grammatically. In the first place, you have to have a capital letter after a colon. And when you use capital letters for grit, that signifies an acronym. And I'm I'm not sure exactly how to put it correctly, but I know it's incorrect the way it is. I mean, I I I like it. Student success is grit. They have to have grit, you know? I mean, that's what it takes. And then they're defining grit as the ability to develop curiosity, persevere, have a greater purpose, advocate for oneself, and continually nurture a growth mindset. So I don't know, I don't know how it's written properly grammatically.
So. And you worked with somebody from the school.
I I no, I didn't.
She did.
I was at a city meeting when they scheduled this, so um I got this afterwards. And so um I I so I I I'm in, I'm in, I love the word grit.
I do too.
And I think it's, but um so one of the things I would also define in in grit is building capacity for resiliency. Things is is a is a pretty foundational piece of grit as well. And um then the second thing is, is how are we measuring grit?
It doesn't mean, I guess, that's kind of my.
I mean, I love the statement.
Yeah.
And I and I love everything that it says and and all those things are fantastic uh in terms of identifying student success. But how do we identify? Is there?
School administrators and or teachers worked with Catherine on this?
Yeah, it's, I I think it's more, I mean, the the idea here was our our original student success was, I mean, there was really no way you could directly connect.
Right.
Some measurement to it. And so I think with with it being in the board priority is there's going to be parts that are just, you're not going to be able to say this is tangible. So that was the work that we did over last, the second half of last school year with the DLT, the staff folks was like, okay, we're going to interpret this. And so we're going to attach some specific measurable goals to that. And then that was the June. Yeah, that was the DLT when we all came in. It's like, here's what we came up with and it was that discussion. And so I think with that is, no, you're probably not going to directly measure grit, but the specific goal areas that we came up with were in terms of reading, math, and then the um growth mindset using the Panorama Survey. So it was kind of three different measures that spoke to this. And so that it it does address it. And I think we were, it was it was a very big underlying question of, we've got to do more than just looking at measuring test boards. Uh and so. So that's part of where, you know, we we have this tool that we're still, you know, we're still figuring out how to use effectively, uh but it is, you know, nationally normed uh that you can customize. And so we've already had discussions about, okay, making sure that all of the schools K-12 uh are are having consistent targeted questions that speak to specifically the growth mindset. Um and so then we can report back of saying, here's how, you know, which does relate back to grit, saying, here here's what the kids are reporting, here's what we're seeing with essentially the academic growth. And so that those would be the measures in support of this priority. Um but it's it's really not, because the priority is kind of almost more like, I know Steve calls it, you know, it's also the, it's the vision, which is using a little bit different uh language on it. But that that's the more big picture piece. And then we have the support goals that speak to that, but it's impossible to measure every aspect of that.
So when we had the last DLT meeting, I think what I came away from was that the group or DLT, some, they had they had fine-tuned some of the wording and maybe I don't remember which piece of it. But I felt that some of us were extraordinarily critical of it at that DLT meeting. I was like, hold on, let's not criticize all that work they did. And so we we named, I guess, Jay and Catherine, I forgot who, but to work with a couple of the school. I'm just, I just wanted to know that that happened and that there was sort of a teamwork that went into that so that they don't feel like we just literally ignored what they did earlier.
I believe it did, Catherine.
It did. And that's where, yeah, this.
Just as background for that, they the subcommittee had one meeting. Um they met on June seventeenth. I took notes for them. Jay wasn't able to be there, but it was shared to him afterwards. And the other two subcommittee members were Nick Chapman from the elementary school and Lisa Piscatello.
That's just the last piece I remember about it. It could you, I I sort of understand her uh that the fact that grit looks like a acronym. I mean, maybe you could not make it capital and then bold it instead so that that word is still standing out.
There you go.
Or and you could choose to just capitalize the G.
Yeah.
Or I call it size.
Yeah, of just kind of specifically visually calling it out and then.
But I don't see any semi, I don't see any colons that don't follow with the capital letter, so I don't.
Grit, colon, the ability.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not an English major.
I'm not either. I was just good at it. Maybe semicolon. Because you don't need a capital after that. And. I never was good at colons and semicolons and their use. So that's why I don't know the correct way.
Well, and could you say, just be saying grammatically appropriate and then we can, we'll double check on that. And so I think it's, it's the question of with grit is, do we want to just visually call it out? Do you want a capital G? I mean, it's, I think the consensus is it is critical and important. That's a big piece. Bold it, whatever.
Yeah, probably capital bold.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, one cap. Colon and then capital T and then otherwise.
Sure.
What do you think? Happy with the statement?
What about the addition that he was talking about resilience? I mean, it's a good word.
Yeah, I mean.
Subcommittee changes that.
I mean, all of these things do help build resilience. Each one of these statements is a resilience building factor. So I mean, I think it's built in.
Four things that are part of the um the definition of grit from the subcommittee was from the work of Angela Duckworth and how she defines grit in her her work.
So there's some citation or some rather than just nebulous terms behind it, yeah.
No, her 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 work in this field, in this area is pretty redoubt. She's. I like it.
Okay, well, a motion to adopt this proposed language with a minor changes.
You need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve this.
I think that's a second choice. We got a motion from Janelle.
Okay, this sound is getting really, really bad.
Well, you should be here because I know you could hear me.
Well, come push my wheelchair.
Sounds like a motion and a second. Anything else? Discussion? Hey, uh, Janice.
Aye.
Janelle.
Yes.
Jay.
Aye.
Hey, I hear too. Thank you. Okay, item eight, board functions and comments. Again, our board goals, which we kind of see changing and district priorities on the back page here. We're getting close to our time. Um we talked about some of these dates, it's under key dates and calendar updates. Um special meeting next week. I guess we didn't ask Janelle, are you able to be here on Monday?
No.
So Janice is not, I understand, but.
I'm not sure. I don't think I can, I I have another meeting, but I may be part of it. Mondays are.
Yeah, we we talked uh earlier about, um, I'll reach out to Crown Apple and uh see if we have options for rescheduling because optimally the goal is to be able to have the whole board there for it.
Yeah, I already Catherine will be there. Jay's out. Sounds like Janice is still.
Yeah, so if it's only two or three out of the group, then we'll. Plus that'll give you a little more time to read the book if you haven't.
I don't read. Um is what, where did this come from? I I mean, I'm trying to remember, like, is this something that we were given from the state because of some, you know what I mean? Like, is it some checklist thing that we have to do?
No, no. The the um, the money for it was, you know, from a basically program from the state. Uh but this is essentially part of our work that's very closely aligned with the work that we've been doing for a couple of years with Sound Discipline. So it's it's essentially kind of the theoretical underpinnings of the practices and processes with Sound Discipline. And so um it's it's an approach to the work, it's a framework. We had our first session with him with the administrators Monday and Tuesday. We met with him and just kind of similar at the board of, we'd read the book. And so this was like, okay, here's what this, and it's a consulting organization and there are authors as well, um and how they work with schools and districts to um really, it loops back to those foundational pieces that were just talked about uh in the in the board priority of how do we get at those and and very directly get at those? So that this is a um district-initiated program and process. So this is not something that was saying, here, you need to do this to check these boxes.
I mean, I a hundred percent agree with our goals. I don't think there's one, I don't even think there's a word that I disagree with. I I have my doubts about the book and that angle, which I find overwhelmingly in every area of life today that I find that is getting squished down our throats.
But it's, but this is, uh, to me, I mean, it's an opportunity to have that discussion with the author and the trainer to say, you know, to that's that's.
I know, I saw the author just disagree with him, but.
No, I think that's perfect. We we had a, it was, um, we had a very good discussion about that. And so it's not the expectation. It's like, it's not a sit and get. It's really that the goal here is for the board, very early in the process, to have a solid understanding of what this work represents, to have the opportunity to ask those questions. And and, you know, even says like, yeah, no, we're really not there. I mean, that's always the board's right to do that. And so the the intentionality about early on, so it's like, you're getting it at the same time we are before it's, you know, and it's not intended to be like an initiative or a program. It's more looking at, let's look at how we do business and operate and what things might we be doing that, um, you know, unintentionally negatively impact kids' dignity? I mean, we talked about the intentional piece of the bullying and that sort of stuff that you mentioned of. But but part of the intriguing things I think find there is like, you know, one, there are things that we can do and it can be measured. And he actually connected it back to the um, a number of districts they work with are using the Panorama Survey as well. And so this is really, it's it's one tool to address and to to uh very intentionally work towards positive change in that with school culture, with staff culture and those sorts of things.
So that meeting you had with admin recently was similar, like similar to what we were, we would be doing.
Yes.
And that you felt there was a lot of, you know, give and take, a lot of conversation that wasn't.
Yeah, it's 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 not a program. And that that's that's part of, and and so part of my early conversations with the author was, you know, of course, as as an educator, you go, Greg, you know, we'll do a big keynote and everything like that. And as we thought more about it, it's like, no, because then, you know, everybody's seen those programs come and go. And really, the goal here is like, let's just look at the thing, how we're organized, what we do so that, um, you know, that we're we're intentional about building positive supports, building, you know, and supporting student self-efficacy, um and that they feel like, you know, I have a place here, I feel safe, I belong. Um and that's kind of that that foundational piece because, I mean, there's tons of research out there. I don't have the citation.
I'll share with you.
Basically, that that supports the idea, I mean, it's a basic thing of, if you don't feel safe, you're not going to be in a place where you can learn and be receptive to that. And so it's looking at, Dr. McVitty, like I said, they they have the strategies and here's how we apply it in the classroom and and help to build those kids' skills. This is largely more looking at kind of the the underpinnings of that at a system level is how, you know, we're kind of interpreting it. So yes, it's very interactive and it's it's the opportunity before we really even move forward with it to say, okay, board, let's sit down and understand it uh and be able to ask those very pointed, difficult questions to them.
I was gonna share, I'm maybe three quarters, but. And I'll be honest, that's kind of my initial reaction. You read the title, okay, you know, cultural equity or kind of however the title's worded.
Some of those words that just seem like.
Yeah, I understand. And I share some of the same initial thing. But, you know, reading it, and there's, I got a lot of questions. I wrote a number of things down. I want to kind of ask this author. But generally, I think the message is, you know, how do you get kids to learn effectively? And what kind of things are are appropriate for classrooms? And if there's a lot of good things in there, I guess, is kind of what I, so far that I've gleaned from it that I think is also important, just I think like David's saying, that, you know, if this is something the district's going to do, we kind of need to understand it too a little bit here. If it's something we want to maybe ultimately pursue, I guess, we can have that discussion as well. Anyway, it's not as bad of a read as the, as you might think.
Okay.
But we may need to look at a different time. And then just take a look at these dates. I won't read them all, but um upcoming the next couple of weeks, there's some new hire lunches and welcome breakfasts that um hope to have most or all of the board at when we can all be there, so.
Sorry.
Well, Friday the twenty-sixth, the first one coming up for lunch, and then the following Tuesday morning for breakfast.
Oh, Nancy already has it. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, that's how that helps me. And then I heard Nancy mentioned before, I don't know if we quite need commitments yet, but be thinking ahead to November eleventh through the thirteenth, that's the OSBA convention. Are we trying to be looking for who can go and who can't go?
Soon. I'll send out a reminder. And this calendar didn't quite make it out um all the way to December, but um the board might want to consider its December regular meeting time at a future meeting. It falls during winter break.
You did bring that up, so it's December twenty-second or something.
Might be difficult for us to line up staff presenters at that time.
December twenty-first.
Twenty-first of December, yeah.
Maybe we can look at that next month.
Yep.
Christmas Eve here.
Let's move it to the fourteenth. But yeah.
Well, maybe have a suggestion next month. Okay, well, let's, unless I'm forgetting anything, let's go ahead and adjourn our regular session here. And we should be having our executive session, folks, here if they're not already. So we'll go ahead and return, adjourn the open session and take a bit of a recess before our executive session.
Do I, do I come back in on another Zoom link, Nancy?
Please use the second Zoom link.